Being here is a great accomplishment. Uh, we will remember this for the rest of our lives and thank you guys very much.
Your friends are deserting you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I'll never tire of recognizing state champ.
So we, we have with us today Cory Skelover, he's the director of the Humane Society. And he's going to do this presentation Cory. Also, uh, Leanne, our, uh, O'board as well.
How do you follow that Cory?
They're all here to listen to my stray cat recitation. I'll try to follow that.
Um. He's talking to the microphone, it's drugs online period.
Podiums make me nervous, I think.
It'll be alright.
Standing behind. You guys don't all have a huge packet, but we were able to give you a little something to, to look at while I talk so. This last fall, I was here to give you an update about our beat the heat trap new return program for stray cats. I think when we were here, I just kind of threw it out there. We didn't have, I didn't have numbers or anything for you. So I had a meeting a few weeks ago with, with Ani and Jeff about a project that we're working. I have in front of you that has some of the, the cat TNR information and then additional information that Ani requested. Um, for a little bit of app from the Humane Society for our newest expansion project, um, out at the main site. But first, the map that you're looking at, I call this our heat map. Um, this is essentially three years worth of data, um, plugged into the city's GIS map to give you an idea of where we're spending our time. To neutering stray and feral cats to help control and reduce the cat population. So. Data for the map that you're looking at. So this is two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, I'm just going to give you the county data. So we, we have support from you as the commissioners on, um, stray cat TNR outside of the city of Lancaster and the city of Lancaster also provide support for, for those. We fixed four hundred and twenty-seven cats. Twenty twenty-three, we fixed six hundred and twenty-five. Uh, and then so far this year through June, we fixed two hundred and eighty-seven. Um, which puts us on pace for five seventy-four. So what does that mean to everyone who? What it means to us is we're seeing a decline in requests for cat and kitten intake, uh, kittens specifically. Uh, does that mean that we ever have room to take in more? No. Uh, what it is doing is it is slowing down, um, uh, the requests for intake, the certain, um, overpopulation in a lot of areas. So you'll, a lot of, I'll give you just a general idea. In town, when we do TNR at certain places, we, we trap big, probably five or six. When we're out in county locations, we fix it up to twenty at a time. Uh, so it turns into a, to a big project. So we do these TNR surgery days twice a month. Uh, and we do roughly fifty of them at a time.
Jeff, can I ask a question real quick? I know this is kind of a weird question, but do you have any idea for every cat that you spare neuter? How many cats you're preventing from being born here?
So they have fancy pyramids that you'll see on, online all the time saying, you know, two cats and their offspring over time. I think in a matter of three years, we'll equate to like one point four million cats. I think just doing, just multiplying it out might be a little ridiculous because it's just not feasible. You have to have, you know, perfectly healthy, everybody lives, that type of situation. But I can tell you, realistically, we're, we're probably reducing it by thousands. Um. This program has really, uh, we know it works. It's really opened eyes to, to other places. So we go and I go and talk about our program, how it's set up in other counties. So like I, this Saturday, I'll be in Newark, um, talking to a group of people about how to get it set up, how to get it to work. And then how you approach your elected officials to talk about helping with funding. Uh, so it's, it's a big deal, pretty important. The reason that, um, see on your sheet, uh, one of the pieces that we've been sharing the cost, um, fifty-fifty. Uh, we've decided as a nonprofit, regardless, we're just going to continue to do the program throughout the year, whether we run out of funds or not. So we're, we're hoping to get an increase or a consideration of an increase from the, the commissioners on that, on that front. Uh, so those are the numbers that I didn't have for you last time I was here in the fall. Um, the other project that I wanted to kind of touch on, you have a packet, um, for further discussion. Again, I think you guys, the grant has permission. So we're looking at building another twenty-four hundred square foot building, um, on the current property of where the small dog park is. Um. We are just consistently running out of room. Um, and even as part of that project, it will have a surgery suite in it. So this TNR program, as it gets bigger, we have a hard time trying to fit fifty cats in our surgery area while we have our vet clinic services going on. So this will relocate that, gives us more storage. I think we're currently, we have a oval unit. Um, I don't know that you guys have seen, but we currently store it in the dog shelters building, which I'm sure they'd love to have some space back. So we're, we're anticipating starting the construction of the new building, uh, here in the next month.
Can you talk a little bit about how you two cooperate?
Uh, we wave at each other.
I promise a double X.
Yes, she's trying to, uh, your generator went out, so we stored their vaccines on a refrigerator. Uh, now, uh, the cooperation is amongst our departments is interesting because we're, we're two separate entities, but shared driveway. If you've grown up in Lancaster and Fairfield County, where our, the, the original part of our building used to be the county dog shelter. So we have people come in the door, I think both directions in terms of looking for our services and they're in the wrong building or looking for their services. So I think it's kind of helped us understand each other a little better. Well, what we offer versus what they offer and we can communicate with the citizens better on, you know. I, I think it's odd, you and I have talked about it specifically, like there's a over lack of services, but what, where is that? Where do we not overlap? So stray dogs, dog bites versus animal cruelty and neglect. So it's, it's, I think, a continuing educational piece to the community and then even for us and how we're communicating with each other.
I think we were also exploring the idea of cooperatively purchasing vaccines.
Yeah.
Like that. So that's the option.
We, we have onsite vet clinic. Uh, we also have a vet staff, um, that we operate full-time. Uh, so it gives us an opportunity to, um, potentially offer and share some resources in terms of buying the vaccines and even sharing medical services. Um, we haven't really gotten completely into that yet, but being next door neighbors, I, I mean, we talk about even when I'm city council and I talk about the art of neighboring. I mean, the art of neighboring has kind of disappeared in, in certain areas, I think. And for us to be neighbors and not share those things would be a little short sighted on our, our part. So, um, the part that we're, you know, cooperating with that, even sharing parking spaces. I don't know if anybody's drove by the Humane Society and the dog shelter at any point. It looks like we have something huge going on every day. We do. There's a lot of people in there, um, and sometimes I have to call and say, hey, can I invade your parking lot because we, we have, you know, a spay-hooter clinic going on with fifty people dropping off their animals or whatever that, that is. So, um, I, I would say, uh, it's work in progress, but it's a, it's a fairly decent relationship.
That's all you got?
That's all I got. I was given a fifteen minute window and I usually blab on and on and on. So I thought I did pretty good.
So your ask is five thousand dollars?
For the, for the TNR program, yeah, that would be, so we spent, so your current contribution of the twelve-five, um, the last two years, we've spent over twenty thousand dollars and that's just like where fifty percent would be. So we're just, so it's ten over. So I'm just trying to share the, see if we can share that additional cost to keep it one.
Overall request is.
The other part's that construction project. So with you, with you guys being our landlord, uh, we ask permission anytime I do an expansion. I think this is the fifth expansion I've come to you guys with. This one's a little different because it's not a, um, it's not an attached to the existing building. It's, it's separate. So it, it was a whole different animal in terms of site planning, site development, uh, utilities, all of those things. So that's why, that's why you have the other section to your packet. So discussion.
I'm going to say five thousand dollars a week and then we'll come back to the expansion.
Yeah, and my apologies. Uh, I put it together. Ani had asked for it previously. I just got it together yesterday because that's when they gave me the number. So she didn't know it was coming and neither did you. So.
So, so your, your dog park, how much is that being utilized? Obviously if you build there, it has to be utilized.
So we built that in twenty thirteen. Um, we have a small section and a large section. Then we have a private section for the shelter dogs to get out. Uh, it, it's still utilized, but, but I would say not as much. So when we first built it, because that was really the only dog park, only dog park in town in, in the city that you could bring your dogs to. At this point over the last ten years, you have every, um, apartment complex that's been built or remodeled has added one. Uh, the city of Lancaster put a dog park down Miller Park. So the burden has been shared. So the intention, this building will be, be constructed up there. We're going to turn around and the large dog park section right now, we're going to split that in half. So I think dog parks were, are still a thing, but they're, I think more of a bad part of it has kind of, and everybody has one now. So you can walk out your door if you live in an apartment complex, you got your dog park fifty yards away versus somewhere else.
Have, have you reached out to the neighbor?
Us on this project specifically? Not yet.
You know, prior to that, you know, I think some trees protected that.
That was the, yeah, the first, when we first did the dog park, that was, that was a concern. But there's now, if you, if you go out there and look, you can't even see the other property because everything on the property line has grown up now. So.
If you went by, just reach out to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll tell them once we're gone. I think that would be.
Yep. So usually they're great as long as they don't hear a chainsaw because they think something.
But it was just to give them kids a.
Yep, absolutely. Art of neighboring, right?
Good neighbor.
Yep.
Thanks for being here.
Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So our time now for public comment. If you wish, uh, to make public comment, please approach the podium and give your name and address and where is the treatment of, please. We have a very full skin today.
Thanks Cory. Brought your security detail with you today, huh? Dude. Dude, the force of five sisters, I feel ya.
Might become a judge. Well, my name is Selena McCord at eight six four zero Rafner Road, Northeast Millersport. These are my six kids. I homeschool and my husband and I enjoy outside activities with them on our five acres of land. We have eighty acres of farmland surrounding us. We're thankful the committee has recently decided to do exclusions for the townships, but this still does not cover the protection of one of the biggest projects. It's supposedly maybe partially grandfathered in, in Eastern Cotton Tail and Walnut Township. There's currently as much as fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-four acres of operation or operational solar industrial farms in Ohio and five hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and six acres under construction currently as of the most recent stats updated on June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four from the Ohio Power Siding Board. We're already warned in our country about upcoming food shortages to come and oil reserves being used up, which is a great concern for the reasoning of pushing these plans. Us citizens of Walnut Township with proposed Eastern Cotton Tail project is the only one currently in the pre-application status out of fifty-two other projects and companies in the state. Which makes us the only project currently with a chance to be declined because per the rule, since the first public solar hearing, we are still within ninety days to reject the Eastern Cotton Tail project. Promises of two million and up is for solar farmland leases sound appealing to citizens for their current happiness and future plans for their families. Some of the cautions not being mentioned to the citizens and farmers that have agreed to leases are what is happening when solar plans fall through. Either by the companies going under financially or other issues such as malfunctioning panels that are not able to be maintenance and their insurance having to pay for it, or the burden of overwhelming flooding. There are lawsuits and liens happening currently on farmers' lands when solar plans don't go as expected. There's supposedly tax credit offered up to as far as two thousand thirty-two for farm owners, but what happens if that money dries up and there's no more money propping up the deals in the government? The Solano County California Superior Court found the EDF Renewable Energy engaged in fraud and trespass on the property of Solano County in two thousand eighteen. The case relates to the negotiation of a two thousand eleven easement agreement for the installation of electrical collection lines. They determined that the collection lines were substantially outside the grid area and also found that the energy company agreed to an easement and knew it was going to exceed. They would disrupt my family's peace and feeling of safety because they've chosen to plan to surround our property on one side and the back with an access road to their project. Solar industrial farms are not neighbors or a replacement for food and crop agriculture. Abraham Lincoln said, "America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves." We forgive our neighbors that have entered into the lease contracts and we will celebrate when they get out of them. But we will all continue to stand firm in these hard times to do what is right. Will you stand firm with us and generations to come by deciding to pass a resolution that will prohibit the specific solar company of EDF Renewables Eastern Cotton Tail Project within this ninety day period of pre-application status? Thank you.
Who else would, uh, like to speak, please?
Good morning. Stephanie, I'm staff for Humanities Southeast Ohio. I have a couple pieces of good news. I first want to introduce, um, Augg, he is our new community, our, uh, community, that's me, uh, volunteer director. And he covers all eight of our counties. Um, and he is from Lancaster here, lives here, which I'm excited about. I mean, he's just another Fairfield County person, but, uh, he's based out of here like I am at the Restor. However, he covers, like I said, all the counties. So he travels a lot. Um, but he will be doing such an amazing job. We're excited to have him with us. And he started at a great time. Um, so that, uh, you've been about three weeks now. So this is his fourth week. Um, so we're excited to have Nate. So I want to make sure I introduce him. And then second piece of good news is we finally finished and dedicated our hundred and fiftieth home on, uh, three twenty-five Sixth Avenue. Um, that project took a lot longer than we would normally take. Uh, welcome to construction, as most of you know, but, uh, it was a great turnout. We had over, uh, seventy people show up to that and celebrate with Rita and her three girls. Um, I know she is beyond elated to be in that home. Um, and some of the mayor may not know her story, but she was technically homeless uh, with her three girls and for about a year was living in a camper out at Sugar Grove Campground, uh, where a lot of things happened, a lot of times that were, uh, requiring them to couch surf, um, at different places. So, um, it was a really rough year and a half for her to, um, go through to get to this point. Um, this is also the very first home she's ever owned. Um, and she's very excited. The girls are within walking distance to their elementary school. They have a great view. I can't wait to ask her how fireworks went and if they got to watch them right from their backyard since they have such a great view of Mount Pleasant, uh, from right there. So what a great accomplishment, not only for us, but for her and her girls. And we're not stopping there. Career Center is almost done and getting ready to move to Arnie. We also have, um, two builds starting this September. One on Graff Street, which will be a community build and then the Career Center build that will start this fall with the students again. This will be the second one. And we're not stopping there. So we're, we're continuing and we can't do any of this without you guys. So.
So I attended your dedication.
Yes, you were there.
Yep. You know, that house, that neighborhood, it makes everything great.
Thank you.
I was very impressed by, you know, and, and the media in charge, a bunch of volunteers.
Nate gets to be in charge of volunteers. He's great.
Stayed as, uh, decided to just talk about cats. If you'd like to bring cats or anything. You never want to cooperate.
So thank you, thank you both for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Very welcome this evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to, uh, speak?
Well, thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Um, briefly, uh, something came in while you guys were on recess last week. Uh, state auditor issued a bulletin, uh, the official bulletin numbers twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five, where there is going to be now required fraud training for all elected officials in all ways of various political subdivisions. Um, the first compliance period just started July one and it applies to counties, townships and state. And basically all of our employees need to take this seven minute online training by September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. Uh, any new employees start will have thirty days to complete the same training. Uh, I actually did the training while I was on vacation. Uh, it took seven minutes. Was able to generate my certificate. And when you do this training, there are a couple pieces of documentation you're going to have to fill out. One is one of, is acknowledgement that you received the materials and the other one is a certificate that you took the training. Uh, I believe in the bulletin and I think Jeff can speak to this as well and the auditor's office is also prepared, uh, guidance. Uh, fill out the acknowledgement. It should get printed after you take the training. Uh, I think all the elected officials, twenty forty's have a spreadsheet they can keep track of, basically making sure what's taking the training. I think Jeff and Abby have set something up on ESS so they can track it from their end as well. Uh, it's just going to be a matter of documentation. I will say I'm pretty certain this will be, you know, auditing the next go around. So I just want to make sure you're aware of it. Uh, but again, it was seven minutes. It was pretty easy. Uh, I should have just played it out loud. I listened to it on my earbuds because my husband was in there. He's a state teacher. I'm like, oh, I should just make you watch this. You're going to have to do it by the end of the year. But not a big deal. Right. Uh, just wanted to share that with you all and let you know that that was the, I don't know if I missed anything or.
I don't think you can, we sort of set up a system of redundancy and set it up for ESS and the prepared communication that will go out to all employees and also another communication that will go out to our elected officials and department heads about the, uh, about the spreadsheet that has been provided by the auditor of state. And I know that the auditor's office is also, um, shares information as well.
Just do it jointly whenever you have your spreading. Um, the training is so easy and the documentation is made efficient.
Yeah. It's just going to be a matter of keeping track of it. So that was all I can think of.
Well, thank you. And, and we'll be sure to comply with that. But, you know, seven minutes is my goodness, right?
Alright, thank you commissioner. A couple items for weekend review. Um, last week, July first, we did welcome, uh, the transition of Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit as a county department. Uh, this took a lot of time, effort and energy of multiple departments and individuals. Uh, so thanks to Greg and his team, Dan and his team, John and his team, Carrie and her team, Barton, Stacy and their team. It was a, it, it took a village and I think everything went off smoothly. And Commissioner, um, Davis said, we just got to make sure the buses keep running and the buses kept running, right Greg?
It was good running. All the employees showed up and sleep expect. And especially thanks to IT. We just came in for Monday, Sunday, came in five AM on Monday to make sure it didn't pop out of the hitch. And Cory, his folks, um, on top of all of this, we took on a giant, biggest contract ever. During the transition with JFS, which will ultimately really benefit transit, uh, and I think the JFS clients also, uh, where we'll be coordinating all transportation for, uh, non-emergency medical transportation for folks. So it's, uh, they, we have, uh, three subcontract we've already been together as part of this, just a lot of moving pieces, but talking about thousand plus trips over the course of a year that we are now having to schedule. Uh, but it's going well and, uh, we're, we're excited.
So, and I'm very thankful for everybody behind the scenes that, uh, put all this together and spent all the amount of time that it took to make it this transition seamless. I don't assume it's seamless, but I'm sure.
It's like a wedding. You don't tell people what, but they don't know.
Want to be a surprise, right?
Well, and I, I, I've missed, I forgot to thank Jeff and Abby and the HR team, as well as Aaron Kennedy. Uh, you know, new hire coming in, getting acclimated and going through this transition. Uh, him and his team did an amazing job as well.
We did the, pass on our honor, thankfulness to Aaron, staff and Rick and everybody that.
It did take a village.
And in his absence, we should probably recognize Commissioner Davis for his leadership and foresight and, uh, you know, kind of person is forward. So.
And he has joined us virtually. He's unable to be here in person. So Commissioner Davis, would you like to add anything?
I, um, just appreciate the whole team and the support of my colleagues in this effort. And I'm, uh, wishing I could be there to celebrate this moment with you all, but, um, very, very appreciative and look forward to the future and of transit in Fairfield County.
Thank you. And, you know, uh, even before the, the formal transition, uh, Rick, uh, myself and others have been doing work to reach out to employers, uh, set up new contracts that you talked about in JFS, um, to kind of chart, um, an expanded course for transit, making sure we're meeting, uh, the employer and workforce needs, uh, making sure we have got that focus. So thank you, Commissioner Davis.
Hi there. See, uh, Dr. Wolf up there, you know, I mean, just keeping transit top of mind and they've received some money that could be used for transit. So they reached out to us and we're going to be purchasing accessible van once we all figure out the permit, uh, process for this, uh, with those funds to be able to service both, uh, these clients and others.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. Okay, next Tuesday, July sixteenth is, uh, one of our quarterly round tables. Uh, it will be from one to four and it is at the Fairfield Center. Adam H. Board members. So recently you all had appointed Sunell Bach or Dr. Bach, uh, to the Adam H. Board and then. uh, to the Adam H. Board. Unfortunately, due to um, commitments she was not aware of at that time, she is now unable to serve. Uh, you had also interviewed Bailey Plevins at the same time. Uh, Ms. Plevins is still interested in serving. And so therefore, we will have a resolution on for your consideration at next week's meeting to formally appoint her. Perfect. Uh, highlights resolutions, the review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals. And due to no meeting last week, we do have a bumper crop of resolutions, forty for your regular voting agenda today. I'll highlight a few here for you. Uh, there is a resolution approving an agreement relating to Proger um, as presented by legal counsel for the national opioid litigation and an MOU to effectively distribute potential settlement, settlement funds. Uh, so that is going forward. So as they, the, that opioid settlement continues, uh, different groups are being added to that process. You have to formally uh, make that decision to participate. That's what this resolution is. We also have a resolution to approve an expedited type-two annexation of five plus or minus acres from Pleasant Township to the city of Lancaster. The petition for this bike eight, five-acre tract along Sheridan Drive was submitted by David Hodge on June fifth and first right at the Commissioner's June eleventh meeting. Also have a resolution to approve a repayment extension for an advance for the airport fund, uh, thirty-eleven. A resolution appropriating money for the model zoning code. So we've talked about this. Uh, this is just formally transferring that money to regional planning. Resolution to authorize establishing a new capital project fund for the purchase and renovation of the building on Sheridan Drive. So this is what is uh, currently known as the Colonnade Building. Uh, we've been in a contingent purchase agreement for this, uh, pending uh, funds from the state. And we were successful in securing that. We're just doing the preparation for that right now. Um, hoping to secure a closing date in the near future, but we need to wait for more information from the state until we would actually establish that closing date. We also have a resolution to appoint Missy Clum to the Area Twenty Workforce Development Board. She's replacing Marla Bailey, who's no longer able to serve on this board. They're both from FMC, FMC, and so that's why we're making this transition and appreciative of Missy being wa- uh, willing to step up and serve in this capacity. Engineers Office, you got a bumper crop, Jason. Ten. So one to approve an equipment lease agreement with the city of Lancaster. Two resolutions to approve advertising for the salt barn, concrete pavement, and the salt barn structure. One for a change order for the refugee road safety improvements. Four resolutions for approving contracts and notices to commence for micro servicing and pavement markings. A resolution to approve a federal project agreement with ODOT for the Coon Path and Election House Road intersection. And a resolution to appropriate money, appropriate monies for personnel. Do you want to touch on any of those?
How much information do you want? There's the.
There's only five hundred pages in the packet, actually.
How about the salt?
The salt barn, we're excited to get that going, yes. So we have started, we broke ground on that in March. We're actually out there building the pad today. And so, um, we hope to have that out the mid scene and have that in my.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We have a resolution for an agreement for the installation of security cam- cameras and access control with Motorola. John, anything to add there?
Uh, Ian and I have been working on this for a while, but this kind of probably transitions us into the future for the camera system that some of them have been online for a long time.
Just best usability.
Might replace the old with uh, something that's current.
Better usability, better uh, analytics in, in, in the camera system.
And access.
The access control that puts us in a, in a security standard that's current for these best practices.
Well, appreciate both of your uh, attentiveness to that. Uh, we also have two resolutions for the Village of Pleasantville as part of the twenty-two Community Development Block Grant Program. One for Nash Builders for the Village of Pleasantville's ball field improvements. And the other for the Pleasantville Pool Concrete Deck Improvements. Josh, anything there?
Um, now, uh, change for your.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you, Josh. I know you guys have been first staffed at regional planning and you've been pulling some additional uh, weight there. So appreciate that. And I understand we do have a new person that will be joining the team next week. Wonderful. And we'll invite them to, for an introduction. That'd be great. Uh, another regional planning one is the uh, resolution to approve the BYRV plat agreement for the OU CU Financial Credit Union. Anything there? Okay, perfect. And thanks to utilities for uh, transferring a two thousand nine Ford F- one fifty and Plow uh, to the Facilities Department. So there is a resolution formalizing that. Thanks, Josh and Tony. I think you say thank you too.
I did say thank you.
That's all for the resolution review. Other review, uh, don't have any today. Bart is in a training. Uh, calendar review and invitations received. Rochelle?
Thank you. Commissioners receive the following invitations. Lancaster Festival, welcome picnic on July seventeenth at five thirty PM in the OU Lancaster Gymnasium. The Athena Awards banquet on August first at five thirty PM at the Millard West Center. And Senior Expo and Town Fair on August twenty-third from ten AM to two PM at the Fairfield County Fairgrounds in the Zed Sands Building. Under correspondence, Commissioners issued a press release on July first titled Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit Joins Fairfield County On-Official As a District Department. There were two additional press releases, the first on June twenty-eighth from the Health Department titled Fairfield County Point of Sale Tobacco Retailer Store Audit. And one on July first titled Auditor's Office Unveils Updated Homestead Application Web Page. Report on the Audit of the Financial Statements from the Auditor of State. Correspondence Regarding Industrial Solar, Juvenile Probe and Quartz Twenty Twenty-Three Annual Report. The County Auditor, Dr. Karen Brown, provided her wins of the week for June twenty-seventh and July third. Dr. Brown also provided memos on those dates. The subject of the first was Hotel Motel Lodging Taxes Update, those first happened twenty twenty-four. And the other was the General Fund Budget and Strategic Plan Update. Dr. Brown's Call Center Update, the Map of the Month, and the June Notes Letter were also received.
The Commissioners received a letter from the Ohio Power Siding Board. Job and Family Services, Healan Summer Newsletter was provided. The Fairfield County Municipal Court's June Criminal Trafficking Commission Bureau Report was received. And the State Lancaster Annual Conference Financial Report Twenty Twenty-Three is also in the back. That is it. Thank you, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
Thanks for effects, Sonya.
Yeah, just a quick update on uh, all the land use stuff that we were doing. Um, so once we got through the land use plan, the next step is to get the villages, townships, uh, get their plans ready. And a number of them are working with that process. We have had um, really productive conversations with a variety of villages and townships who are working on uh, the new community authority that we talked about. We talked about preserving the land and protecting the taxpayers. And uh, we're starting to actually do those things. So Village of Thurston, Village of Baltimore, City of Lancaster, Greenfield Township, Walnut Township have all spent uh, a good bit of time in this room in a bunch of different meetings, trying to hash out how they can work cooperatively to um, you know, build commercial and residential units uh, with some density to preserve the land and using new community authorities to protect the taxpayers. Uh, we're not at the finish line yet, but it's in sight, uh, on a couple of them. So and that's just the first step. Got a long way to go, but uh, we are making progress.
Commissioner Davis, uh, how you doing, my friend?
I'm doing well, thank you. And uh, I don't I can't remember now if we're under new business or old business, but I'll say no to both.
Hope you feel better soon.
Thank you.
Well, I hope everybody wanted to have a uh, great Independence Day, you know. My dog hates fireworks. It used to be they shot fireworks on, on Fourth. I'll be shoving off, shoot them off for weeks. I can live with my poor dog. Anyway.
The dog sheltered too.
Yeah, the dog shelter. I can't imagine.
He might eat for fireworks.
Can't imagine. These are big, big businesses.
Yeah, thank you.
And uh, as Commissioner Fix mentioned, the land use plan and all of this hard work, right? You know, great job. Thank you. Um, yeah, anything you'd like to say about the dog, Jeff?
Not really. Everything's going good. We've got a lot of dogs, a lot of puppies. Got seven in on the nap of fireworks. Um, unfortunately, not at which we're playing. We actually dropped those off to the vet this morning. Um, they'll be available for adoption later.
I just want to say that I had the opportunity to put in a couple requests for the new Team Dynamics uh, portal that the uh, IT department has set up and it is super easy. I absolutely love the fact that you can choose what direct lineup of person that you want to go to for your request. Uh, I think it's gonna be a lot more efficient. And I look forward to the rollout of the additional offices to be put on that for request tracker. Uh, I thought it was, it was really helpful. And so just kudos to the team for putting that together and moving us forward in a, in a much easier, simplistic direction.
That's what she's referring to is like the ticketing system that we have to put in requests with IT. Uh, this is just one of the things that IT has been uh, chugging away at over the past couple of years to uh, you know, uh, put us in a better position with technology. So thanks to Dan and Jimmy with that. Uh, there are even more broader uses and application for this product. That's what Lisa was also referring to, that we'd be able to roll out to departments uh, that need to kind of uh, have a process in place to move things forward. For example, JFS uses it in a number of ways with their departments to keep track of things. So does DD. Uh, and we will be expanding that to other departments. I think Lisa has an interest in seeing how that can be helpful to hers. Uh, but it's really, really quite powerful. But it has been a lift. So thank you. And to all the people that experienced the.
Two shout-outs one day, dude. That's a pretty good day.
There will be time.
Always experience.
You can leave that to Dave. I just wasn't preparing.
Don't get too big of a head.
James, a penny.
Uh, one of the other resolutions that you're signing this morning is just an equipment lease agreement that we have with the city of Lancaster that we renew every year. We've done this for the last ten years. There's a couple changes just in uh, Service Safety Director and Superintendent at CalDOT. So really, that's the only change on that. And then the, the salt barn just expanded on the salt barn a little bit. Uh, we decided to do two bid packets. So you're actually approving two separate uh, resolutions for two separate bid packs for that. Felt like we could get a little better price uh, by breaking the project down a little bit.
John, you have anything else to add on salt barn?
Well, once we get this piece completed, we'll have another, the actual top of the shelter.
Long, long time ago.
Yeah, I think it'll be great for them and then.
Off to Boston. Perfect, great.
Congratulations to all elected officials, department heads, employees, and the clean audit opinion. The financial audit has been completed. The auditors are now working on the federal CING audit. Which is very detailed, but they'll likely not be completed until around September. We did receive word from the state auditor that next year, an independent accounting firm would be selected to do our audit. That is likely due to labor shortages that the state auditor has. And they're digging into that, a number of entities to have it contracted as opposed to done in-house. The audit staff can say they would be available for any questions, available for conversation at any time. I'm giving that alert now because it is something that's different for Fairfield County as we think about the next year. We do have the July map of the month, which is the Village of Freeman, which is founded on ancient earthworks. I did not know that. It was interesting history to learn about and has uh, created quite a few conversations uh, from the map of the month followers. Um, mid-year hotel motel lodging taxes are right on track as we would expect. The call center summary that I included, there were twenty-four calls, which aren't very many in the evening. Compare that to valuation years, there are about, you know, a thousand that we do over time in the evening, which tells us that we're over communicating and that that is probably not something that's needed on and off year. Most of the questions for the call center were about homestead. And so we have created new outreach materials for the homestead program and that is on our website now. General fund revenues at mid-year are fifty-six percent of the estimate, which is two percent higher uh, than it was last year as compared to the estimate. So very a little bit better in terms of comparisons to the budget. And then next week, I'm teaching at an AGA conference. I'll make sure that we have representation here.
Let's see, Josh, from detail.
Oh, Josh, sorry.
Back to the land use. We attended the Greenfield Township we and Tony did last night, land use plan meeting. They finalized their map last night, so they'll be working on uh, finalize their plan with their employer in a couple months. That should be wrapping up your six, the Greenfield Township.
Big deal. They're actually doing. So thanks for being there.
That'll be. Um, so first off, I'm not sure, I don't know if we said it or not, but thank you to the prosecutors, also called their work. Uh, the transit transition.
Oh, yes. I left them out of the village.
Well, there's like three hundred.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, this Oscar award.
Uh, but they moved real quickly and adjusting contracts and all of this stuff. So uh, thank you so much. Steven Darkels, he's on, he was driving that. So thank you, Steven. Um, and thank you to everybody who helped push out. Uh, we had a girl's study camp start this week. And we could have to go, we only had ten students for the capacity of thirty, and we had twenty seven. So I reached out to a whole bunch of folks, the county sent this out, schools, everybody sent us out last minute and uh, it's awesome to see. So um, anybody's interested, Friday at eleven AM is when they do the, parents come in and they learn a little bit about stuff. So the next three weeks, Friday at eleven AM, you can come and uh, uh, see what the kids learn throughout this camp. So.
Are they gonna do another video kind of recap then? Like, happened the last time or no?
Uh, we need to. Let me uh.
That was kind of cool for folks that.
It was. Our video guy left. So um.
What do we do though?
We can uh, reach out.
Trial, right?
Yeah.
What do we do something?
Yeah, yes, we need to get something good. Um, it's what we're gonna, I know. I was gonna say something about IT just to get my answer.
You and Dan had a trade spaces there, don't you?
But John, you all caught up, right?
Never caught up. Yeah. Uh, just apologies again for the restrooms in the building today. We're still updating some of those updates to the restrooms. And then uh, on the eBay side, um, we'll have a little bit of severe weather coming our way with the remnants of our tape today. This be weather over here.
Good. Got a little history last summer, isn't it?
There was a couple layers of history in which um, yeah, I have, I have the pictures of the plaster with the, the painted uh, stench flank. Really interesting. We had to get through that because it was unstable. Uh, that wall was actually plaster, which is coming off the wall. So kind of where we're at right now.
Uh, nothing from IT at this point. I'm just gonna keep my mouth.
Morning. I'll join the theme of gratitude today and uh, thank John and his team for their quick response to the air conditioning going out at our uh, pavement center. We have a new pavement center on Chestnut Street where we take child support payments. Um, that went out yesterday. Uh, it's been a pretty long day, so uh, got, got pretty hot out there.
It's a hot box in there.
Yes. But it'll uh, be, that center will be closed uh, likely for two days while they get that prepared. Uh, and in the meantime, we'll be accepting child support payments at the office. Uh, I think a lot of people will be surprised with all of the electronic options for making payments that we continue to take, uh, accept over twenty thousand dollars a month in child support payments through that center. So it still remains an important part.
As well as for tax payments. So that's.
Your tax, property tax payments. Uh, we have somebody in, you know, we're in that center um, for like five weeks twice a year.
Please rise if you're able. Can you join me in the fudger of the evening somewhere?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Phil, any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Three little minutes for June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Sumut, second discussion. Being done, uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levits?
Yes.
Busham passes two zero. From the Commissioners, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seven dot nine dot A, a resolution for.
A resolution to approve signed agreement relating to progress presented by legal counsel for national opioid litigation.
The Commissioners have items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, and P and Q.
Second, discussion. King, that roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. For Fairfield County Engineer Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot R. A resolution to approve an equipment lease agreement with the city of Lancaster Ohio.
Fairfield County Engineer, move items R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z, and A, A.
Second discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Facilities, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot EE. Resolution authorizing agreement for the installation of security cameras and access control with.
Submit. Second discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. For Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, Res- Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot CC. Resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated to a major expense object category, Fund 7521.
Fairfield County Family and Children First Council, I move items CC and DD.
Second discussion.
Heather, Josh, anything to add?
Additional discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot EE. A resolution to approve additional appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated to a major expense object category, Fund 2599, Workforce Fund.
Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items EE and FF.
Second discussion. King, that roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. For Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot GG. A resolution authorizes the approval of amendment two point one to the FY 24 grant agreement between Fairfield County Juvenile Court and Ohio Department of Police Services.
Submit. Second discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Sorry. For Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot HH. A resolution authorizing approval of contract agreement by Fairfield County Court of County Commissioners and Nash Builders.
Fairfield County Regional Planning Commissioner, move items HH, II, and JJ.
Second discussion. King, that roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine dot KK. A resolution authorized transfer of the 2009 Ford F-150 Plow to the County Facilities Department.
Fairfield County Utilities, I move items KK, LL, and MM.
Second discussion. Again. Roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Payment of bills, Resolution 2024 dash seven dot nine. Resolution authorizing payment of invoices for departments that need or commissioners approval.
Submit. Second discussion. Roll call please.
Commissioner Feck?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled July 16th and 9th.
Any additional items to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time? Questions adjourned? Second. On David's signature, I would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned.
He's unmuted. I don't know.
Stephen, it's not too late to, uh, say something if you'd like.
I agree with the motion.
Well, thank you. Hope you get well soon.
Thank you.